Okay. This session is in order. Are there any, is there any public that would like to address the board? Mr. Mosier? No? Okay. Opening items, rule call.
President Jim Ferryman.
President.
Vice President Bob Uden.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Director Mike Schaefer.
Yep.
And Director Art Perry. Thank you.
Assuming Mr. Mosier is gonna address us later, but we'll worry about that then. Any other public comments or any of the public like to address the board? If not, items of study. Number one, January 2020 Code Enforcement Officer Report. Ed?
I think it was President Ed Roberts who gave this report. Good morning, President Ferryman and members of the Sanatera District Board. Ed Roberts, I'll be presenting your January 2020 Code Enforcement Officer Report. Ladies and gentlemen, for that month, I conducted a series of five proactive scavenging investigations. They were spread out throughout the city, two on the east side, two on the north end of town, and one on the west side. Included a summary and a map location for your benefit if, and if you have any questions regarding that. Yes, sir.
Peppery Lane.
Yes, sir.
Are there any recurring people that you cited this time?
As a matter of fact, sir, both of those folks were recurring. Those are previous contacts that I've had probably four or five months ago. And... I think so, sir. As discussed before with the board, it's relatively futile to issue an administrative citation to an individual for scavenging purposes just because there's no sanction that we can really impose because there's no address that we can associate with the property and take any further collection or make any notifications to that individual. Most of these folks are indigent, and by that I mean they're homeless individuals. So there's no physical address where we could send any kind of correspondence out to or take any further enforcement with them.
Let them know about the bridge shelter that they have on...
I do, sir. In the past, I've been instructed to make sure that all of these folks are aware of Costa Mesa's efforts of outreach for the mental, the homeless resources. I've discussed the lighthouse, bridge shelter, and certainly what's being constructed out here on the east side by the airport.
Okay.
I have a question.
Any other question? Yeah.
How is the wind affecting the trash cans being picked up? I mean, are you giving them a little leadway, the people? Because a lot of the trash cans are just, when they're empty, they just blow all over.
Ma'am, to answer your question, I've noticed that certainly throughout the neighborhoods, especially if it's a lighter load. Most of our trash carts are pretty hefty in themselves and if they're fully loaded. It's kind of a rare, I'll notice it when there's a trash cart laying in the middle of the roadway and there's debris, and most of the time I'll just take it upon myself to right the trash cart myself and just throw the debris back in. I haven't noticed anything exceptional or out of the ordinary where we have litter strewn on in the streets. I think most folks are pretty cognizant that they want to keep their neighborhood clean, so they'll take it upon themselves to pick it up. Nothing of note. One more item, sir.
Oh, sure.
Just for the month of January, there were a series of 107 warning notices issued at large to the community. I noted all the different addresses. I've noticed a significant uptick in the area of 19th Street and Placentia, right around the Sandra James Street area. I've noticed more and more carts. So I'll be probably diverting my efforts to that area to do more of a focused enforcement in that area and see if we can kind of reduce that.
Empty carts? Empty carts that are out in...
Yes, sir.
I know we've had some issues over in that part of town with missed pickups.
I'm aware of that too, sir. I've seen that and we've been on top of that. I think what this is correlating with is more of a parking issue thing. People are using those trash carts to delineate their parking spots and use them as kind of a blocker of, or you know, just kind of precluding people from parking their spot. High concentration of apartment communities there, so what ends up happening is you get that rotating amount, you know, tenants coming in and out that aren't, you know, we get everybody up to speed and then they move out and we get an influx of new folks. We just have to make them aware with outreach. That concludes my report. Do any of the board have questions?
Thank you, Ed. Anybody have any comments? Okay, thank you. Item two, reclassifying the part-time accounting clerk position to full-time status.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I turn this over to Caitlin Tran to, given this presentation, I do want to let the board know that in your agenda, you notice you don't have your monthly standard reports for the recycling, organic recycling. That's because we did not receive the data from CRNR on time to post that for the agenda. So you'll have that information in your next meeting, in your March meeting.
Is that because we lost our representative or just the information wasn't forthcoming? Do you know?
Good question.
It was just because of the time you had to go by Thursday and there wasn't enough that were good accounting...
So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Caitlin Tran and she's gonna give a presentation on this item.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. From September 2015 to May 2019, the finance department consists of three full-time positions: the finance manager, the senior accountant, and the administrative assistant. The administrative assistant worked in the front desk while assisting the finance department. Due to unanticipated events last fiscal year, the department came to consist of two full-time position and a part-time position. Maintaining the reporting and accounting duties required by the finance department with only a part-time accounting clerk has become a challenge. The accounting clerk is limited to working 20 hours a week, which does not provide adequate time to assist finance department with other duties. In the past years, the volume of accounts payable processes has increased also to be in compliance with the Fair Labor Standard Act's law. Payroll processing requires an increased amount of time to complete. In addition to accounts payable and payroll, the finance department also needs assistance in accounts receivable, posting cash receipts, generating and analyzing financial reports, scanning backup documents to attach to Springbrook system, and providing support to the finance department when team members are out on leave. Currently, if a staff member goes out on leave, this result in one employee to manage all of the duties in finance department. Reclassifying the part-time accounting clerk to a full-time position will provide additional support to the department during the absence of staff and to help increase efficiency and effectiveness throughout the department on a daily basis. When recruiting for the part-time accounting clerk position, finding a candidate that's a right fit for the district has been difficult. The full-time accounting clerk position will include benefits and hours that are more desirable in order to attract candidates that are well-qualified. If the board approves the full-time accounting clerk position, the recruitment will start in March and the new incumbent will have a target start date in May. There are sufficient funds available in both the solid waste and wastewater funds for the last two months of salaries and, excuse me, salaries and benefits for the current fiscal year. As for fiscal year 2020-21, there is $29,000 budgeted in the part-time salaries and benefits accounts. Staff estimates the full-time accounting clerk fully burdened cost is $74,500. Staff is proposing to transfer funds from the following accounts to cover for salaries and benefits: to transfer from anti-s scavenging, tuitions reimbursement, incentive pay, and contingency accounts. A total of $45,500 from both funds. If you look at the report, you'll see detail of exactly where are the accounts and how much is transferred from each account. Staff recommends that the board of directors direct staff to bring this item back to the February 24 regular board meeting to consider approving reclassifying the part-time accounting clerk position to a full-time status.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Art, has it always been a full-time status position on our books?
Finance manager, and now the accountant, and a part-time.
I mean, the part-time, the full-time, is that always been on our books?
It'd be a new full-time position. No, it was a part-time, so we're recommending going to a full-time.
Similar to what you did with David?
Yes.
Part-time doing the yard or the maintenance and things, and we elevated that position to a full-time, similar circumstance, right?
Yes, but during the period of 2015 and 2019, Lou, she was full-time admin assistant in front, and she was doing, the majority of her time was devoted to the finance department. So now, really, I feel like we lost half. We didn't during that time. Yes, that was prior 2015, yeah.
So we hired Lou as a part-timer, as an accounting specialist. We always had that part-time position and we saw so much value in her to keep her. We had this opening position as administrative assistant, so we hired her, gave her the administrative assistant position, which really she had two roles, as a front office and supporting accounting as a part-timer. But as we grow within the organization, we're finding that we need additional full-time staff in the finance department, as Caitlin mentioned, especially when her or someone else goes on leave. I also envision, you know, I've always envisioned the finance manager being more of a journalist than just a finance manager. So by having another full-time person on staff, those two people can really do the nuts and bolts in the finance, and then Caitlin can help me with all the leadership-type roles within the organization.
What qualifications do you look for? You have finance manager and then the accountant obviously has, is the CPA? Is the accountant a CPA? Do we, we don't require that?
No, we don't.
So we wouldn't require the assistant to have any financial background or degrees? When you're, I know when you're recruiting, you're looking at different things, but do we...
Prefer, prefer to have government experience and to have accounting experience, but because this is a lower level, so it's not, the requirement is not, it's not much.
In that same vein, the accountant, do we provide any incentives or do we do anything to hopefully get that person to be a CPA or is that, you do?
It's not a requirement, a job description to have CPA, but within the organization, we always encourage professional development, and so we always encourage anyone in our organization to further their education development. So if someone wants to get a CPA, go to school, we do have a tuition reimbursement program where they can do that.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob, I think you had some.
Well, is the admin assistant also doing half-time upfront presently?
The admin assistant right now, so now the admin assistant, again, the role has kind of changed with admin assistant now. So now we have Tanisha, the admin assistant, and her focus is still on the front office and helping out with permits, issuing permits, also helping out with HR administrative duties on the HR side, human resources. So again, it's evolving and changed in the front office.
Well, my question is, is, so we take the half-time person in our half-time position and make it a full-time position, are we gonna need another person then as a half-time person?
No.
For the work that...
No, we won't, no. We will not need another part-time person, no.
Art?
But you, in your job description, include a higher level of expertise?
Sure, for the accounting specialist? Absolutely. But the higher level of expertise, you're gonna probably, we have to probably hire at salary too. Yeah. It's, sure, we could if the board wants to do that, but I believe we've, it's more of an entry-level type position, so you know, we're hoping maybe, obviously we want someone that has experience in finance, but you know, someone out of college, it'd be fine, you know? We can always train that person up, but if that's the board's decision, we could.
I'm just throwing that as a question, because we haven't talked about this as a board, this is our first time. I just thought, boy, I'd have to give it a shot and see what happens. I mean, I don't know what the labor market is right now, I know it's tough to get, I mean, everybody has jobs right now, but they may want to bump themselves up to a better position. I mean, that's what I would do if I was writing up the job description, but that's, you know, I'll leave that up to you and Tran.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody, any other board members have anything? Jim, you're not gonna... Okay.
Would like to rush, do you want us to bring this back for consideration? That's the recommendation.
I would entertain a motion.
Or me, and that's where you'd take action on the board meeting? So right now, we're just, recommendation to direct staff to bring this back in your February board meeting and you'll then take the formal action.
It's been moved, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move along to, let's see, update, communications, support, and strategy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nabilah Guzman will be giving this report.
Board of Directors, staff released a communications support and strategy RFP in December 2019. Five proposals were received, and the top three firms were invited to an interview by the Solid Waste Ad-Hoc Committee last month. The ad hoc committee was impressed by all three firms, but there were some questions on the scope of services and the cost proposals received because there was not an apples-to-apples comparison across the three firms. The ad hoc committee directed staff to revise the scope of services and request the revised 12-month proposal from the three firms. The initial RFP listed 20 tasks and staff was able to reduce these to just 11 tasks with an optional add-on. The tasks focus on areas staff feels that we need the most support with, such as developing a strategic communications plan, gathering a mailing list of district residents, developing awareness campaigns, and providing staff with communication and public relations advice. The optional add-on is to provide website redesign and content services. Attached to the staff report are the revised cost proposals submitted, and staff is requesting that this item is taken back to the Solid Waste Ad-Hoc Committee for a final recommendation to the Board of Directors. In the staff report is a chart comparing all three firms, the revised 12-month cost proposals, the optional add-on cost, firm location, firm size, number of employees that would be assigned to CMSD, and years of experience. I am available for any questions you may have.
Questions? Yeah, Mike?
In looking at the chart under optional add-on, I'm really surprised. I mean, after going through everything we did with the interviews and everything, this number's really, were you surprised, obviously?
Not really surprised because this is what I suspected, that it wasn't a true cost from some of the firms. So it was nice to, it was nice to go back and be able to get a true cost for a 12-month period.
One for JPW especially. What was the big difference? Because I think when we talked that morning, they were at about...
They were at 65.
65, yeah.
Like I mentioned in the Solid Waste Ad-Hoc Committee during the interviews, they just recommended a cost for a communications plan. And then they allotted $25,000 for any kind of work, which I did mention to the committee that it might not be enough to cover all the tasks that staff...
I apologize, everyone. I just, CV Strategies, looks like they held the line pretty well to what they had originally presented to us that morning.
The CV Strategies proposal does not include mileage and traveling time, which they do charge for. They did not include it, JPW did include it in their revised proposal.
Any other questions?
Ad-hoc committee a little bit about the process and what you guys, what you're thinking? Who's on the committee, you and Bob? Bob and I, and Nabilah was there, and Scott was there.
Members of the CAC were as well. Monty, Monty Fields and LD, they were on the...
We're looking at two right here. Do you have, I mean, what's your feelings? You know, first of all, the interview process and the way staff handled it was great. I mean, to allow them to come in, the taskmaster over there keeping them on schedule was perfect. I mean, too often you sit in presentations and they, you know, elaborate and go on. Nabilah did a great job of keeping these folks, and they knew that they had time limits, so I thought that was done really well. All three of them would do a fantastic job to help us. I think the thing that, and it was kind of a unanimous thought, and Bob, you'll back me up on this, CV Strategies was the very last one, and there's always an advantage to going last in interviews as far as I'm concerned, because that's the one we're gonna remember probably the most. But that group was enthusiastic, had some enthusiasm, and they showed us some examples of things that they could do for us. The other two didn't do that.
Director, you mean JP, JPW was the last, not CV?
I thought CV was the last.
No, it was JPW.
CV.
CV was first.
CV was first, those, you're right. So the JPW, I'm sorry, showed us some examples, they were, they were really good. And they were kind of the consensus pick from all of us. But now that I look at the cost, I'm not sure. They're still at the top of my list, so, Bob, I...
Well, I thought all three of them presented well. The thing that I look for when I'm choosing a consultant is, I look, I look, I try to, I need to evaluate the project manager. And I think for CV Strategies and JPW, their potential project manager showed up and gave the presentation.
For TriPepe too, the staff that came, they were all the staff members that would be assigned to CMSD, and we have Blair here from TriPepe.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the problem with, that I had with TriPepe is the project manager was there but never got to speak. So it's hard for me to evaluate. I think Ryder did it, Ryder was the speaker, and they only had a limited amount of time. But, you know, I think the project manager should have had an opportunity to more than introduce herself. I thought TriPepe had the tasks that were required, the focus was probably, they, I thought they understood the process better than anyone else, and the proposal reflected that. You know, their cost was, in the proposal, they said it was gonna be $10,800 and some dollars a month or something. So they were significantly higher. CV Strategies has an add-on of $10,000 for web support, and TriPepe has an add-on of $19,000, so their understanding of what is needed is different. And TriPepe is in Tustin and CV Strategies is in Palm Desert. So I'm, I am comfortable with any one of them, and I think staff needs to help us make the choice, because staff has had a chance to, one, I reviewed all the proposals, but staff created what the proposals were supposed to contain, and they also have had dialogue with the three potential consultants since then. Are you comfortable that CV Strategies can provide what you need? There was no explanation by them on text, only for costs for each of the 11 items that you asked for. So I need staff's input on, if you're comfortable with all three firms.
Yes, we are, we are, I think, all three firms are very well-qualified, so any one, any of these firms that you picked, I think is a winner for us, so...
We haven't decided that we're gonna pick a firm.
Correct. Correct. We will eventually come, the direction is to bring this back to the ad hoc committee, let them make a recommendation, if that's what Director Uden wants us to get...
Could it be part of a study session so all of us get here? Because the ad hoc, it's just gonna be two members. I think we'd better do it at the study session, have the ad hoc talk to us at the study session. Let me just add, if I might, Jim. When staff brought this to us originally, I was a little reluctant to even think we needed anything like this, I'll be honest with you. I, based on what our staff has been doing, I thought, eh, do we, but after looking at some things, and some other things have come to light over the last few weeks, and after listening to these three, I'm more inclined to support doing something like this, and it's kind of based on what's happening in the community. I mean, we spent a ton of time and effort and money to head off a consolidation, let's be honest, okay? And I think, I think we've gotten comfortable in thinking that that's not coming back. I think we need to get past that comfort because it's coming back. I mean, there's already been some talk, there's people saying things out there, the people who are trying to consolidate with us, the Water District, they've done volumes more in this regard than we have, and they're gunning, I think they're gunning for us again, so... That's why I like to have it in the study session, so we could all hear some of the ideas that were presented. You mean having these folks come and present? No, you guys could update us. Oh, I get you. You guys could, because we, you know, groups didn't, haven't heard the presentation, but if you could present it to us with the staff, what their ideas were. Do you want the ad hoc committee to make a choice on one and bring it to a study session, or do you want us to...
That was really what the purpose of this today's meeting was, is to share, the ad hoc committee share with you what they learned from the meeting. And then that was really what this purpose was, is to share the information, get some questions from the board, and then direct the ad hoc committee to report back, go back to, and if we want to meet with the consultants again, we can do that and have some discussion with staff, and then ultimately the ad hoc committee will come back to you with a recommendation at a board meeting and you make that decision.
You know, my two senses, if these are so close together as far as ability or what product they're going to propose to us, and there's significant differences in the cost. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's like twice over twice as much. I mean, if they're really the same quality, why not go with the cheaper guy? You know, I mean, you see what I mean?
Well, that's another option you have. If you're comfortable with what we're proposing today, then you can direct us to come back in February with a contract, or you can make, come back in February with that action, go with that one firm you want to pick, and we can move forward.
I think this is kind of confusing to us who were not the ad hoc committee, because you've got all three, but usually at ad hoc committee, what they do is they recommend to the rest of us board, saving us from that. But then also, you've got to walk through what's happening. We don't know the process that we think would happen off of this, and you know, I think we're missing part of it.
That's where I was coming from. I would like to hear some of the techniques that they're...
Yeah, me too. Yeah, me too.
Rest of the ballot, they're spending this kind of money.
You know, it isn't, I'm not in favor of this, because I think it's a great thing, but I think that, you know, I want to be in on the vote, but I want to see what the vote, you know, what the vote consists of.
That's why I suggested a study session, maybe the ad hoc committee could present some of the good ideas from each one of them, so that we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, because.
Or the staff.
Because we're out and about, and we would understand what's coming in.
Then I'll add that, you know, in looking at, at what staff had proposed for the scope of work for these folks, it really is geared towards public relations, social media, website design, all of those things that need to enhance our visibility in the public. You know, again, majority of the public doesn't know who the heck we are. And all three of these firms had presented to us their ideas on what they could do for social media enhancement, what they could do for publication enhancement, videos, all the things that we've relied on Gina to do, basically, and others. And I think, based on Gina, Gina having to stretch into another role while, while Nalani's gone, I'm sure it's tough, but, and I'm going to say this, and I don't mean it unkindly, that may not be Gina's forte. I mean, she may not have the ability to go into a bigger public relations type effort, whereas these folks, not that you wouldn't do a good job, okay? But I think you have other things to do for the district. So by having someone like this, and I agree with Jim, I mean, I would, I would take any of these three. Now, I had originally thought that JPW was going to be the best, CV second, and Tripeppy third. That's kind of how I walked away from that meeting that morning, based on what they were going to do for us. I would be very comfortable with CV. When they gave their presentation first, I was very comfortable with what they had to say in terms of, here's what their firm would bring to us in terms of enhancing our position in the community, okay? So whatever we decide to do, I think I've swayed more to having someone help staff get to that point where we need to be.
And how would this affect our consultants that we have on board now?
That's a, thank you.
Because that does enter into it, and there's going to be some overlap there, and, you know, it's, it's just more money, and that, you know.
Scott and I actually met with Peter yesterday, and Peter is very anxious to work with whoever we pick. In fact, he wants to be a part of, Peter and Roger want to be a part of whatever we do with these folks. And I, and I think from, from their perspective, it's the local knowledge in the arena that we're in here politically that will help these firms with their program. That's kind of how what I thought.
It's, it's really two, two different scope of words for the, both consultants. Farwell Public Affairs, they're, they're pretty much like our eyes and ears of what's going on in the politics in Orange County. Is they're well-connected? Where the firm we picked here is to reach out to the community. And so, different, different objectives of both, from both the firm we pick.
I still think there's a little overlap there. Art?
Go back to your statement about, what would, what would you think that we should do from here? Have the ad hoc committee make a recommendation?
Yes.
I feel more comfortable after hearing what Mike has said, to do that, and then bring it back to, you know, what you proposed.
Yes.
Let me, Jim, if I might, let me ask Navila, based on this revised set of numbers and things, do you think the ad hoc committee needs to revisit where we are on this?
I believe the ad hoc committee was formed for them to make this decision.
That does. Okay, so we should meet again, is that?
We can meet at the end of this week. I know Wednesday's was working, maybe next Wednesday, for the ad hoc committee to make a final decision to, for the board, and then bring the contract back to the board for approval, based on whatever the solid waste ad hoc committee decides.
Oh, yeah, I, I think, I think we should meet as an ad hoc committee again. My, my, it's important to me that staff understands that the, the three consultants are able to provide the services that is needed, so that we don't end up, you know, with another $50,000 contract down the road, because the consultant with the obvious low price doesn't, may not understand the scope of work. And you've, you've had, staff has had a chance to talk to the consultants, and so I need to hear more from staff. So I would, I would say we should.
We had a study session.
Need at a, well, have an ad hoc meeting, and then you, and, and/or another study session to, to present the findings.
Well, do we need somebody to make a motion to set our course?
Mr. Mosher wants to speak, and that's the first one.
Okay.
Thank you, President Fairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. First of all, yes, the, the change in cost estimates is very odd compared to what the committee thought when the bids were open, so the ranking has changed dramatically. I'm very confused about this discussion here about the need for branding and concern about consolidation. As has been stated, the district has a different consultant, Roger Faubel, I believe, who is on retainer, and I, I'm not aware of the public having heard a recommendation about this from that consultant. So I, I think a recommendation would have to be heard. My understanding was the motivation for this was quite different. It's been reviewed by a committee, which is called a solid waste committee, and I thought the reason we wanted this consultant was not for branding or fear of consolidation, but it was our concern to meet the state mandates regarding recycling goals and getting better public awareness and participation in those programs. And if you look at the scope of services, the, the programs, it, it will have some lasting educational effect on, on the district staff, but the specific programs here are mixed waste cart system, the organics recycling, special solid waste programs, incidentally, the sewer inspection rebate program. So the comment I wanted to make, based on that understanding of what this effort was for, had to do with the financial review, which is further down on this page that you're looking at here. I think it's at the bottom of this page. There's a paragraph called financial review, and it says, should you select a consultant for this purpose of promoting these programs, that the cost of consultant, which now looks like it could be much larger than we thought, would be divided equally between the solid waste fund and the wastewater fund? As a wastewater-only ratepayer, I do not think that that is fair, because this program seems to me, as originally intended and being reviewed by a solid waste committee, is to promote and enhance our solid waste program. So expecting the wastewater ratepayers to bear half the cost of that does not seem appropriate to me, so I hope when the ad hoc committee looks at this, they will consider what would be a more fair apportionment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Art?
I think Mr. Mosher's right in the respect that you guys were formed to establish ways for waste diversion, and I think you should continue with the ad hoc committee, make sure that takes care of, you know, takes care of that idea.
Yeah, I, I may have missed saying that in some of my previous comments. All three of them presented ideas on how to get that attitude to the public to increase their diversion into this, I mean, all three of them presented us ideas on how to get the public more involved in recycling and, and organics, so I'm not about to sit here and say that I want to hire these people to keep us from being consolidated. That's just a part of it. I think public awareness, when, when, when we get our public more aware on our recycling efforts, I think it'll resonate with them, and when we have attempts from outside sources, people will know who we are and say, wait a minute, why would a water agency want to get involved with organics? So the, it's, it's a bigger scope, and I may not have portrayed that when I made my comments earlier, but all three of them were really good about presenting us ideas on, here's what you need to do to increase the awareness to recycle and to, to do the things that we're charged to do.
I think Mr. Mosher's comments are appropriate. What is, what is being presented in the agenda report is considerable scope creep from what the consultants were initially tasked with providing. I remember in the Tripeppy report, it was, it had one focus, and it said, if you want more, it'll be X number of dollars more per program. So I, I think in the ad hoc committee, you know, we, we need to review, basically, the scope creep.
The revised costs do account for the, in the staff report, I included the 11 tasks, so the revised scopes do account for all of those new.
And that's my question, is why, why did we go from one task to four tasks?
The four tasks listed are the mixed waste cart system, because residents, per the citizen survey, residents do not think we recycle because we have a mixed waste cart system.
Right, right.
So an awareness campaign for the mixed waste cart would help us educate our residents that we do recycle, it's just a different way and what the MRF really does. An organics program, organics numbers are not where we want them to be, or with SV 1383, we, I am finding when I drive around the district that a lot of our residents are purting cardboard and paper in the cart, because they see recycling, organics recycling, they just think recycling, glass, paper, cardboard, cardboard, so we need to educate them that green waste and food go in that cart, and what we're doing at the AD facility with that material. The sewer inspection rebate program, that's a great program, that does not have a lot of participation, where residents can CCTV their laterals or insert a. They can do two things with it. It's the CCTV, or they can install a cleanout.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then the last one, we have a great variety of solid waste programs, like our pharmaceutical, our Sharps, our American Retirement, Large Item, HHW, and per the survey, our residents are not aware. We have a CMSD app where they can enter if their item, if their carts were missed, or if they need to schedule one of these services, that our residents are not utilizing what the district has to offer. So the last awareness campaign would be kind of encompassing all those programs and being like, hey, we offer so much, take advantage and include it in your rate.
I, I agree with all those needs, but I think the focus initially was, what Director Schaefer said was, you know, how do we improve our diversion numbers? And, and that would include the mixed waste carts and the organic carts. So that was the initial focus, you know, and now we've expanded that to four programs, which I agree are probably something that we need to eventually educate the staff or the public on, but I, I think we need to sit down and talk more at the ad hoc committee.
What's the wishes of the board here?
I've got a comment. I, I still think, after we make a final decision, the ad hoc committee stays in place to come up with our own ideas to institute a higher diversion, you know? For that, and I wouldn't want it to die because of this going on. I think the committee needs to, you know, come up with some, two or three other ideas for better diversion. Is that, you know what I mean?
I, I guess, we, we know it better than, I mean, we live it, so I agree with you.
Scott, do you have a direction, enough direction?
From my understanding, the board is directing staff to bring this back to the ad hoc committee, the solid waste ad hoc committee. We will discuss the fair proportionate funding of the program, as Mr. Mosher mentioned. We'll talk, also, Vice President Unan wants some to rush on staff on the firm we prefer, correct? And we'll bring that back to the ad hoc committee, and then the ad hoc committee will make a recommendation to the board. Is that about right?
Are we going to interact at, at some point, the board itself?
Yes, yes, absolutely. If right now you're kicking it back to the ad hoc committee, let them hash it out, they'll bring it back to the board for more discussion and, and possibly make a decision.
Well, I think we should intend to go, unless, unless we, as an ad hoc committee, can get it very clear in our minds, we probably should come back to the study session.
If he wants to do that, sure.
Yeah, give enough depth, make a decision. Okay, so you have direction?
Yes.
And we'll move forward from there. Item four, refund of wastewater and solid waste assessment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Navila Guzman, will you give him this report?
President Fairman, members of the board, this item was requested to be, to be brought back with more information from the January board meeting. Mrs. Sofer is requesting a refund of the district's wastewater and solid waste assessment fee charged to her home. Her home on Bernard Street is a single-family home, but the city of Costa Mesa had misclassified it as a multifamily home with three units. Over the years, this home has been overcharged for solid waste and wastewater services. In her initial letter, Mrs. Sofer did not specify how many years she was seeking a refund for, so the Board of Directors wanted to go, wanted to know how far these charges were misplaced. Included in the staff report is a breakdown of the overpayment for both services. Staff was only able to go back 15 years, but staff believes this property has always been incorrectly charged because the records were taken from the city of Costa Mesa. If Mrs. Sofer, if Mrs. Sofer has kept copies of her property taxes going back further than fiscal year 2005, 2006, it could show overpayment fees for longer than 15 years. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Well, you must have done a thorough job, because there are no questions.
Well, we're back to our last meeting when we approved the amount for the other gentleman that came in. We went back for his, and, and at that time, I didn't think it was a good idea. We should have kept with what the law stated, but now we're, this is presented to us with the same concept.
But what did we, what did we, gave him six years?
Actually, if, if I can make a suggestion to maybe help that. So the board went back, I think it was last, it was 10 years?
He had given Mr. Brink four years, and then he asked for an additional 10. So he ended up bag paying him 14 years when the law was six months.
And the board, and the board did that because it was a district mistake, and the board felt, we own it, we're going to give it to you, that's our mistake. In this particular situation, it's the city's mistake, so we don't, in my opinion, should take ownership on that, and therefore, we're not responsible, we don't have responsibility to pay in all this, because it's a city mistake, not a district mistake.
The records, all of our records for older homes, because the city of Costa Mesa used to do sanitary work, the sanitary district's work, we took the records from the city of Costa Mesa. So when Mrs. Sofer came in, I called the, the city's planning department, and they still have the home as a multifamily, three units. So they've never corrected, that's never been brought up to their attention. So all of our records, except for the new, new constructions in the city, all came from the city, the city of Costa Mesa's planning department.
The other guy, the city had it classified correctly? We made the mistake?
He classified it correctly, and then staff in 2003, 2005, went in there and misclassified it. So I could see it in our system that staff went in there and incorrectly misclassified it.
Art, do you have something?
I just want to kind of get a legal review from Alan, because of the two cases. Can we stop it at the six months with Sofer, or do we have to go back based on what we did at the last meeting?
No, I, we, we'll, we'll discuss it with Alan, but remember, when you made that decision last month, you had given an explanation why you did that, you know, so you justified it, and so we have that on record, and he, and he said he recommended that to protect ourselves in case future residents ask for, well, why'd you do it to them and not me? And well, here is the reason. And this is why I'm telling you, this is the, again, reason why you would deny this claim, because it was a city mistake, not our mistake. And so I think, then you can legally go six months with this one, because you're saying it's not our fault, we're not taking ownership, therefore, we're going to, we're going to reimburse you up to six months as according to the, to the, the law. The last one? The last one, you want to be good guys, which is great, and said, hey, it's our mistake, we're owning it, we're going to give you that money. Now, does that precedent, but that was your decision.
What are you asking for today? Just to, just to show us what happened, not a, not any decision.
The board had requested we come back with more information. Mrs. Soffer's initial letter was just requesting a refund, she didn't state how many years. Versus Mr. Brick did specify, I want a 10-year refund and this is the amount that is owed.
We can come back in the February meeting with a recommendation based on district council's recommendation to go and reimburse up to six months.
I would like to ask staff, if I could, we need a resolution, we need a policy change, we need to do something because this is just not even the tip of the iceberg, this is the, the end of the tip of the iceberg. I'm sure there are other properties out there misclassified one way or another. So I would like you guys to come up with some kind of policy change that we can have. Otherwise, we're going to be, we're going to have people lined up. Now, I made a comment at the board meeting to Mr.
Brick.
Briggs?
Brick.
Brick, whatever. There is some personal responsibility here on part of the homeowner. I don't know about you guys, do you look at your property? Or maybe your wife looks at your property tax bill? I mean, shouldn't they have seen this over the, although in her case, their solid waste rates went down over the years. So we need to have a policy on the books to keep this stuff from happening in the future. So with Allen, if you could do, come up with something. Now, Allen's comment was it, what was the state statute, six months or something?
Six months for sewer, one year for trash.
Maybe that's what our policy is. Our policy is simple, we follow the state statute. I don't know, but I would just challenge staff to bring that back to us.
Bob?
I, we've, we've had two, we've had a limited number of these concerns by residents. Have we in the past done a study to try to figure out, you know, I think you could, well, done a study to figure out how many, if any, of the other residents in the community are misclassified. My suspicion is that it's relatively rare.
Yes, over the last three years, I was working on reconciliation with CRNR. So we were looking at properties that have both trash and sewer service. So we did catch minor mistakes. Since then, we've expanded it and actually Angela and Tanisha are assisting me with checking all the other properties that are just sewer customers, making sure that we have them correctly classified. If it's a multifamily home, that we have the correct number of units. If it's a single family home, verify that there aren't any additional units. But they are rare, we haven't caught a lot. We did catch a lot of people that were getting free service. So they had carts and we were not.
We probably won't hear from them.
So Caitlin, Caitlin and I have been working over the last two years and collecting payment for those homes, but misclassification is rare, but staff is still working on correcting all of our records.
We had a, one of our employees ride in the truck with CRNR, it wasn't CRNR then, it was, it was from MS. And they did, they did a thorough job of reclassifying what we, what we're just talking about. And, but they did it on a, they, they did the whole thing, you know, so it was on a large scale. And, you know, it was, it wasn't hugely significant, but it was, you know, it was something you wanted to pay attention to and, because it'll come back to bite you sometimes.
What Jim was saying, prior to that, we used to get five to 10 every meeting of refunds. And that went back three years at that time. So that's why we had the survey and then we corrected all of those, except, you know, the last couple that we've seen, we didn't know anything about, but we did that, you know, 15 years ago or so.
So you're, are you comfortable that it's relatively accurate?
I think it's really accurate right now, especially if they're going through the records with CRNR. I think it's, you know, we may get an isolated case in the future, but I think it's fairly accurate. That's our job to make sure things are properly assessed.
So what direction do we?
We just, we just have staff bring it back for discussion at the board meeting about payment to Soffer.
This was a direction from the board to have a discussion today.
Mr. President, we have a comment from Mr. Mosher.
President Fairman, members of the board, my name is Jim Mosher. I was not able to attend your last board meeting and unfortunately forgot to look at the video of it, so I don't know the discussion there and I apologize if this is redundant. First of all, although people could look at their property tax bill and wonder why they're being charged, I don't think the average person is going to have any idea whether the charge for the sanitary district is the correct charge or not, or how they would even verify that. I suppose they could all call the number and ask, is that the right number for my house or not? Regardless, we do have in the operations code, the chapter about refunds, which is as clear as mud as to when they can be offered. So I understand the moral feeling that when you make a mistake, it has to be corrected. I think the general manager made an interesting point about the city being the source of the misinformation in this case. That chapter, although it's very unclear, does have the admonishment in it that you've seen from the, your district council that making a refund that is not legally, that you're not legally obligated to make, could be regarded as a gift of funds, that is a But there is this sense of moral equity that you have to do things properly. And so although I will not be at your next meeting, we have heard that there will be a legal analysis about this and perhaps this was discussed before, but I would hope in the analysis so that you can weigh what you're doing for the benefit of this customer versus somebody who is in the reverse situation, where perhaps a multifamily home had been classified as single family for many years and been undercharged. Our operations code is silent on what the city's legal ability to recover those undercharges was, which is the opposite of the situation you're facing here. So if we mistakenly charge somebody too little, can we go back and ask to recover those fees for six months, for two years, forever, what? And then that would give you a better sense of whether you're being fair to this person who was in the reverse situation. And since our operations code is silent on that, I have no idea what the district's ability is to recover underpayments. Thank you.
You.
Question.
Marley?
If we take this to a study session, then we're considering having staff draw to a policy so that we can look over the policy like Director Schaefer suggested? Because, you know, this could go on and on forever.
Well, we really need Allen's input.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Allen would be, you know, I think it would be up to our manager to contact Allen about this and getting it done so that we would have something at our hands when we are at a study session to go over it. If it's, sounds good or was something left out, at least it'd be a sample or something. Then we can start from scratch.
Scott, look at the code now, make sure it's up to date.
Yeah.
And then if it may be up to date, because I don't have it in front of me, but let him look at, see if it's up to date and if it needs to be rectified, we can go from there. You know what I mean?
Are you okay with that, Scott?
Yes, as far as regarding to this property owner of requesting a refund, so you want the policy in place first or do you want, you want?
We just have to update our, like Mike suggested, look at our policy, update it if needed. If it's not needed, we leave it as is, but just bring it back to us for review.
Okay, and what about the request from the property owners requesting a refund? What's the board action on that?
I think that we, you presented to us for the six month for one and a year for the other. That's where I'm coming from.
If that's what we've stand, I agree with Art, that if that's been our standard procedure.
Would that be the, our position with the guy that showed up?
It's too late with him.
No, it's too late.
But again, the difference, Jim, was that was our fault, according to staff, whereas this is the city's fault. You know, if she wants more of a refund, she needs to go to the city and ask them to, for help.
It's a little different.
Important for us to make sure that's clear to, clear to them, that it's the city and.
So what do we need, a motion?
Just, you have direction, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, let's, any other comments or questions? Move along. Refund of wa, no, that's.
Number five.
Quarterly legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gina Torreanos, can we give him his report?
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board. Before you is your quarterly legislative update for 2020, the first one of this year. And we are now in the second year of the 2019-2020 legislative session. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the bills that I've included in my report, beginning with AB 1672. This bill would enact requirements for wipes to be clearly labeled to communicate that they're non-flushable and to prohibit companies from making false representations about their flushability. As we know, the vast majority of wipe products don't break down in water and thus they create dangerous obstructions in our wastewater systems. So staff recommends supporting this bill along with CSDA and the California Association of Sanitation Agencies. Additionally, there are several other bills that staff is going to continue to monitor and watch as they progress this year. I'm just going to go over a few of them briefly. So starting with AB 161, this bill would prohibit stores from printing receipts unless a customer requests one. This is a two-year bill that we heard about last year and it, it does continue into this, this year. So we'll see what happens with that. AB 291 would establish a local emergency preparedness and hazard mitigation fund for the purpose of appropriating funding to local governments for emergency preparedness purposes. AB 992 is a bill that we're watching closely. It seeks to clarify the Brown Act in regards to the use of social media by board members like yourselves. Specifically, the bill would allow for members of legislative bodies to safely participate in social media discussions with their constituents as long as the majority of members don't respond directly or discuss specific agency business. Next is AB 1509, and this bill seeks to place greater responsibility on manufacturers of lithium ion batteries. And then AB 1567, sure. Yes, so AB 1509 seeks to place greater responsibility on manufacturers for the proper disposal of lithium ion batteries. So it requires them to provide a list to CalRecycle of all the batteries that they produce so that they can make sure that all of those batteries are properly disposed of and don't end up in the landfills. OCC, they do take household batteries, I'm not sure if they collect lithium. No, they don't.
They do. My son tried to take some there.
They take batteries, they take batteries.
Yeah, but not the lithium ones.
No, no, no.
They're more of a fire hazard.
That's why I was asking. They don't, they don't take those.
Yeah, and that has been an issue. I think with CRNR, there's been a few truck fires, so it's important that, that they end up in the right place. The next was AB 1567, and this bill sets a requirement for all relevant state agencies to be involved in the coordination of state goals related to organic waste diversion, climate change, and air quality. The goal is to get input from all of these agencies in order to reduce the chances of conflicting regulations.
Do we take part in that or is it?
This is on the state level, so it would just require the state agencies.
Not districts?
No, they may ask for input from local governments later down the line, but. AB 1840 is going to require CalRecycle to create a plan for increasing beverage container recycling efforts and making sure people have access to recycling centers.
On that one, Gina, is there any discussion about, you know, a lot of these recycling centers have closed. I mean, we've seen that here in Costa Mesa. Do you get the sense that they're trying to get more recycling centers or just awareness of where they are?
It sounds like this bill is intended to make more recycling centers available.
But not, they didn't, they didn't designate whether they would be public or private, you know what I mean? Like, I would call OCC a public recycling center, whereas the one at Stater Brothers used to be private. They, they didn't really designate or delineate in the bill where they prefer, did they?
No, that's not included yet. And then just a couple more, SB 424 seeks to reduce the amount of waste resulting from cigarette butts and single-use electronic cigarettes. And then lastly is SB 667, which would.
Wait a minute, I'm not going to let you get away from number 24 yet. I don't understand what they're trying to do in terms of, it's, it's the cleanup of cigarette butts?
Yes.
I mean, with Surf Rider involved, there's a big effort to clean up cigarette butts.
From beaches.
And, and the bill is saying you can't, it'd be almost illegal for you to sell, to buy one cigarette.
Yes.
Or one cigar. I mean, it's almost, they're trying to legislate people from.
From buying cigarettes.
From buying those products, so.
Isn't that a good thing?
Oh yeah, I'm sure it's a good thing for some people. This one seemed pretty onerous to me.
It's a little out there, I don't know that it will get through, but.
Think it will? I don't know, I think it will. Well, listen to tobacco industry, I don't know how strong they are in Sacramento, but Tom Steyer will take care of that, I'm sure. Thank you, Gina.
No problem. Lastly, SB 667 would require CalRecycle to conduct a needs assessment to determine how the state organic waste goal of 75% diversion can be met. This includes reviewing technological and infrastructure needs on the local level and on the state level. And that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer, any questions?
Yeah, Art?
Are there stores in Costa Mesa that take the lithium batteries back? Like, there's a place next to the Big Five on Harbor Boulevard, they take batteries back? Is that one that takes lithium batteries?
The place is gone, by the way.
Is that gone?
I think Home Depot does.
I was going to say Home Depot does a.
Yeah, Home Depot does. I said one of my Home Depot stories. Yeah, basically, yeah.
Should we broadcast that out in some way, one of our newsletters where they can take those? This is, that's what I was.
Might want to see if it's okay with the Home Depot first, you know, maybe do some kind of partner, if, if they are doing it, maybe.
We could research the ones that take it in Costa Mesa some way because the city probably would know because they'd have to have a special permit. But if we could broadcast that out in one of our newsletters and one of our, just as thought.
We can look into that.
Fire in their trucks.
Hey, any, any other questions? Bob?
Well, there's a couple, a couple here that deal with the organic, or the organic waste recycling. And it looks like the state, you know, the developed legislation that required by 2020, we have 75% diversion. And now they're saying over the next, like in 667, the state is, wants somebody to prepare a five-year plan to pretend, you know, to figure out how to do this. It seemed like, you know, just like normal state legislation, they got the cart ahead of the horse. They know that the municipalities don't have, aren't going to even be coming close to meeting the 75% diversion. And, you know, it's just like any other thing, it's, it's a toothless bill. They're, they're apparently in the next five years, they'll figure out how to do it and then they may do an implementation plan to get the municipalities to figure out how to do it and give the industries a chance to get their act together to figure out how to do it. It, it's just one stupidity after the other. I think, you know, I'm, I'm for 75% diversion, but the state doesn't have a clue, doesn't appear to have a clue how to. doesn't appear to have a clue how to do it.
But when is the finding process? Aren't they finding this year, if they don't reach 75%?
Well, that's in the legislation, that they can find.
Well, from previous legislation. I mean, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, Scott, do you know?
SB 1383 does not go into effect until 2022, and in the last update, CalRecycle still hasn't passed the final text for SB 1383, so there might be some delay.
Program going right now, they get ready for 2022.
Yeah, and Abilia, in your next report, you've, you've been consistently reporting about 61 or 2% diversion. Now, that the green waste is not allowed as alternative daily cover, are we going to see us back at 51%?
This was the first month. It still counted as a recycling, so I need to get with CRNR and find out where they took that green waste in the mixed-waste cart. But also, the county, the county landfills now have a land set aside for composting. So if CRNR cannot take it to one of their facilities, either their composting facility, or their AD facility, maybe they can still take it to the landfill for composting at their site, but it will come at additional cost.
When is CRNR going to tell us what that additional cost is?
I do have a meeting early, at the end of this month. And I will ask those questions, and I will provide the board an update.
Our percentage?
I believe in this fiscal year so far, it's been about 3,000 tons.
That bumped up to 63%?
No, that, those 3,000 are currently being counted as diversion already.
And it's only if they take that tonnage to composting will we even have a chance to stay even?
So those 3,000 were with the new laws, with new regulation in 2020, those 3,000 were, that were being counted as recycling credit, could be counted as landfill, and reduce our diversion, that's what Mr. Vice President was inquiring.
Who are you dealing with at CRNR now?
Famous Christie, she is a sustainability supervisor, so she... Yes.
Hired in the next couple of years, I'm glad he's still there.
Okay, any other comments? Item six, Rob Hamer's Associates.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, at your January board meeting, you met Michael Vanech, who's now the president of Robin Hamer's Associates. And the board directed staff to continue working with the firm for another six months, to give them a try. I did receive direction from the board to give you an update on the progress being made of working with Michael Vanech and finding services to the district. And your staff report is some bullet points that we agreed to, or some updates with Michael Vanech as the president of RBH. I'm not gonna go to all those bullet points. I do want to mention, though, I know one of the big ticket item that the board is wanting to know is the sewer master plan. And so, Michael will be presenting to the board on March 10th, his methods and strategies for creating that plan. So, we are, he is working on that, he knows that, it is top priority for the board, so we will, we will have that sewer master plan here shortly. Happy to answer any other questions you may have on the staff report.
Any questions?
I had one question, Scott, I, there was, I, in the, in the sewer system management plan, it said that the master plan was held up due to hydraulic analysis of... Do you know if EEC has done that?
It is done, it's complete. So, I believe Michael has all the pieces he needs to put the plan together, and so that's why he's gonna bring that to you on, on March 10th, to show you what we're doing.
That's part of that.
Yes, correct, that was the big holdup, yeah.
I received a card from the daughters of Rob, and aren't they gonna be in town, like, in March, or?
Yes, they're, I believe they're gonna be in town May 21st, 22nd, and we're trying to schedule, coordinate a ceremonial event where we're renaming the yard, the Robin Hamer's yard.
Okay, so they'll notify us of...
Well, we'll notify them, we know they're, we know when they're gonna be in town, so their families will be here, so we'll, we'll have a nice ceremony for that, that day.
Are there anything specific that we, that we should be doing at that event?
Nothing, not on the board levels, no. Staff's working on revising the signs, we'll, we'll work on all the details for the ceremony.
Anybody have anything?
Are we down to oral communication?
Yeah, we're down to oral communications.
I, 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 I think we should address what Mr. Mosher said about if we have a policy... If we don't have, do or don't have a policy, we should have a policy for, if we've undercharged the residents. We have a policy for overcharges, not that we follow it, but... But, so I think, you know, we, we need to address that in the future. That's a good point.
Anybody else?
I do. On March 17th, ISDOC is having a workshop for 700 form, so that you have a better understanding of it. And everyone who's a member of ISDOC, you know, can go free to this. It will be...
Water.
It'll be...
Not totally, it's the first three members of any agency are free.
That's true.
So then the rest, like a vault, yeah.
I won't be attending, I already turned mine in.
You're not gonna attend? Okay. So, I am.
I'm gonna go.
I probably should go, I don't know if I'm gonna go.
When is that?
That's March 17th, it's a Tuesday. It's a workshop on it.
What time?
10 o'clock.
I think Gina needs to register you, if they're gonna go, right?
I can, yes.
Wear something green.
Actually, I'm not sure about the time, I will check on it and let you know.
Well, they do, it wasn't 10 o'clock?
No, forget that, because I will check on the time, it has to be earlier, I'm sure. Anyway, it's worthwhile, because it saves you a lot of problems as far as what you can report and what you can't.
Anybody have anything else? We are adjourned.